Hi, delegates.
To the flag, United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, united. The God of the faithful, the righteous, and the strong.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for all the servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially our former mayor, David J. Wenzel. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Smalls.
Here. Dispense with three of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence dated October 28, 2025 from the Enter Site Bike Coalition, Executive Director Cuba James regarding support for the downtown Scranton walkability streetscape project. 3B, letters of support from local businesses for the walkability and streetscape project ordinances. 3C, letter from Fire Tree Limited, received October 27, 2025 regarding residential reentry center services.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I just have one comment. The letters of support for a streetscape project, they were all standard boilerplate letters with just the signatures on them. Do we know who collected those letters? Do we know who collected those letters?
Who signed it and who sent it out? Wayne Evans.
Okay.
Yeah, he typed it out and he went to each one of them.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else?
I just would like to extend my condolences to the family of David Wenzel, Janet Wenzel and her entire family. Mayor Wenzel was a great mayor. He was brave, brave individual, suffered a lot of personal sufferings and sacrificed for this country and for the city and can be greatly missed. So my condolences to his entire family.
Thank you. Okay, on the third order items, if there's no other, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I also just wanted to echo that sentiment and give my condolences to his family. Mayor Wenzel was a very well-respected and well-regarded person in our city and I also thank him for his sacrifices and I'm sorry to hear of his passing.
Okay, I'd also like to offer my thoughts and prayers to the Wenzel family, his lifelong devotion and dedication to everything he did. So he was admirable and he'll be missed, definitely be missed. In addition to that, last week I brought up, you know, the SNAP benefits that have ceased that, you know, we need to, as a community, come together like we always do and do our part and chip in. And I did, I'll read that part in fifth order that I got a response back from the city because I asked to put local pantries and organizations that would benefit our citizens and residents. And what I got back was just a link to a website that's for the most part, not local specific, it's Pittsburgh, Allentown, Lancaster. So it's not, it wasn't what I was looking for. What I was looking for was a list that our local, a local list, local specific, that, you know, our residents can use as a resource. So in addition to that, I found a couple and I'll report them as I get them. So the rail riders are teaming up with the Weinberg Northeast Regional Food Bank to host the emergency food drive on Tuesday, November 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to benefit local families. The rail riders are asking for donations of non-perishable food items, including but not limited to canned fruits and vegetables, pasta, rice, canned proteins, canned soup, instant coffee, dried beans. All right, so the club requests that no items in glass containers be donated. Donations can be delivered at the Geisinger Plaza at PNC Field. Also, Senator Marty Flynn's office is doing his part. If you or your family are feeling the impact of the recent SNAP benefit delays and changes, his offices are here to help. They have prepackaged bags of food available for anyone who needs a little extra support. And this is the West Side office, which is on 409 North Main Avenue, Jay's Commons. I think everyone knows where that is. So thank you to that. And then I've mentioned this more than once, that the Elm Street Park Church has free dinners. And, you know, I'm sure the participation will increase with the, you know, the SNAP benefit issue. So this Saturday, they're having a dinner, it's free to the public, is chicken, mashed potatoes, vegetable salad, drink and dessert. It starts at 5:30, doors are open at 5:00. Come early before dinner and socialize with everyone that is there. You will leave with a full stomach and your heart filled with joy. And I'm also, tomorrow I'm making a dessert for this event and I'll be dropping it off to do my part. And that is all I have right now.
I have one announcement. The city DPW will not work Tuesday, November 11th for observance of Veterans Day. Trash and recycle pickup will be on, will be one day delayed.
Mr. McAndrew, I just found something that somebody sent me the other day. It's called the Heart of Scranton fundraiser, Heart of Scranton virtual fundraiser. Mayor Paige Cognetti leading virtual fundraising event addressing food insecurity partnership with Scranton Area Community Foundation, United Way of Lackawanna, Wayne and Pike Counties. The Heart of Scranton is a virtual fundraiser to help out our neighbors is taking place from October 29th until November 30th. Donors may choose to support any of the following participating organizations, including Meals on Wheels of NEPA, Friends of the Poor and Catherine McCauley Center. Chop out hunger, Bread Basket of NEPA, Commission on Economic Opportunity Salvation Army and the Indigo Spoon Foundation, or contribute to the Scranton Area Community Foundation general campaign to benefit all four. Gifts made through SAFCF campaign will evenly distribute among all participating organizations. And they say that 100% of all donations, if it's, except for credit card fees, will go directly to support these nonprofits who are doing mission critical work to get food on the table for every home in Scranton. Donations may also be made by check payable to the Scranton Area Community Foundation with Heart of Scranton noted on the memo. Checks can be mailed to Scranton Area Community Foundation, 612 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, PA 18510.
That's great. So where is that visible for the residents of the city?
I don't know where that's visible. I think the Scranton Area Foundation, maybe on their website or...
I believe it's on the city's website as well.
It's there?
Oh, is it on the city's website? Yeah.
And it seems like donations could be made from October 29th of 2025 to November 30th of 2025. Is that correct?
Okay, one more thing. Our work sessions with the administration next Thursday, November 13th, is at 5:30 in Council chambers, then Tuesday, November 18th at 5:30, and then Tuesday, November 25th at 5:30, and that will be on our 2026 budget. Frankly, if you could put that in third order so we can get it up.
I will.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hodawanas, Scranton. Well, I don't know where you five were last night, but I was at the event for David Wenzel. This event I mentioned here at least twice, mentioned it at the county commissioners' meetings twice. And I'm embarrassed to say that not one of you, not the current mayor, and not any of the county commissioners showed up last night. Now, Mayor Peters was there, Mayor Dougherty was there, Senator Casey was there, Judge Tom Munley was there, Joe Ricardo was there, and a host of other people. And it wasn't closed to the public, it was, just call, we'd love to have you come. Ironically, just as we were finishing the event, the phone rang and it was to notify Janet that her husband had passed. That's how close it was. I'm very fortunate, though, in that ECTV was there recording the event, as were several of the local TV stations, and ECTV has graciously offered to make me five DVDs of the event so I could give one to Janet for her family, give one to the Lackawanna Historical Society, give one to the Scranton Public Library. I'm going to keep one and I'll have one that I don't know what I'll do with quite yet. But if ever there was a public servant, it was David Wenzel. And I don't say that just because of his wartime experience, a triple amputee. You got to understand, for the entire Vietnam War, we lost 58,000 service members. We also had 52 service members who were triple amputees, and Dave Wenzel was one of them. That man could have sat back and let the government give him a free ride, but he didn't. And as long as he had the energy to do it, he tried to contribute to this community. Now, I don't know what you all are planning when his funeral rolls around, but here's what I suggest. Take five straws and whichever one of you draws the short straw, get your ass over to the funeral and represent the council and pay your respects. You owe him that. And somebody please take the mayor with you. Maybe she could take a day off from campaigning. I'm very embarrassed to say that the local leadership, both the county level and the city level, was a no-show last night. Now, let's talk about the budget. I haven't had time to go through it line by line, but I will. I see the DPW director is in for a major pay raise of eight or nine grand. Now, I was reading the narrative, and in the narrative it says, you know, we got to give these people pay raises, the non-union people, to be competitive with the other cities and the Commonwealth. Well, here's my philosophy coming out of the military. You don't get promoted and get a pay raise just because your neighbor got a pay raise. Well, the Me Too philosophy. You get a pay raise if you have documented evidence that you have performed beyond expectations. And I do mean documented. You have a job description, you have metrics, and it's on paper. And you show that you have the potential for higher responsibility in the future. Doesn't matter what your neighboring city is paying. It matters what you have done and what you're capable of doing. And I'm not interested in recruiting and retaining people because the city next door is paying more or paying less. I want to see people performing. Too often, we've had people come into leadership positions and then walk away. And if you want, I'll give you a list of names, but I don't think you want that. Also, payroll is going up $1.5 million, but that does not include pay raises for the DPW union workers because they have no contract. And when they do get a contract, you're going to have to open the budget up and add it in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, everyone. Yesterday, our city lost a dear friend of Scranton. Rest in peace, Mayor Wenzel. I'm honored to stand before you this evening to reflect on the recent Scranton local election, a pivotal moment for a community and a testament to the enduring strength of our democracy. Over the past few weeks, Scranton residents came together to exercise one of our most fundamental rights, the right to vote. The energy and the passion displayed at the polling stations across the city were nothing short of inspiring. This election was more than just a contest between candidates or political parties. It was a conversation about our shared values, our hopes for the future, and our commitment to building a stronger Scranton, whether you supported the winners or the runner-ups. Your participation signaled that you cared deeply about our city's direction. Voter turnout in this election was a powerful reminder that democracy is alive and well in Scranton. We saw citizens from every neighborhood, young and old, longtime residents and newcomers who made their voices heard. This engagement is always the lifeblood of local government, ensuring that our leaders truly represent the will of the people. Let us acknowledge and congratulate those who were elected to serve on the city council, the school board, and in other important roles. Winning public office is both an honor and a tremendous responsibility. To our new leaders, we look to you for vision, integrity, and a genuine commitment to solving the challenges we face. We ask that you listen to all constituents, work together, and put the needs of Scranton families first. To those who did not win, I want to express gratitude for your courage and dedication. Running for office is never easy. It takes time, sacrifice, and a sincere desire to make a positive difference. Your ideas and perspectives have contributed to a richer, more dynamic public debate, and we hope you continue to be active voices in our community. As we move forward from this election, let it not be the end of our civic engagement, rather the beginning of a new chapter. The work is not finished when the ballots are counted. In fact, it has just begun. Let's hold our local leaders accountable, stay informed, and participate in our community events and discussions. Each of us has a role to play in shaping the future of our city. I want to thank every poll worker, volunteer, and candidate who helped us make this election possible. And most importantly, I would like to thank the voters of Scranton for showing once again that our city believes in democracy and progress and in one another. In closing, I will continue to speak before council because I care about our city. I will continue to try and get the needs of our residents addressed with proper solutions. Our city deserves the best because of our citizens and Scranton's untapped potential. Together, let's build a Scranton we could all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. People, I was informed that Crooked Scranton has about 6,000 light poles. The city owns them. And PP&amp;L services them. I don't know what the cost is, I couldn't find out. That's not too important, anyway. The 2017 upgrade by First Energy replaced the 60 watt to 100 watt sodium bulbs with lower 20 to 50 watt energy-saving LED bulbs. We went from 60 watts to 20. It's not enough. Now, the financial savings ran from 32 cents a kilowatt to nine cents, which is a tremendous saving, but it's an expensive, poor lighting. Our streets are dark. The newer LED bulbs apparently shine directly downward where the sodium bulbs had a big, large perimeter and were much brighter. Well, so where are we? We're at the cost of brightness, if you ask me. Sodium at 32 cents a kilowatt compared to LED, nine cents. That's a tremendous savings of 23 cents of light. Now, seven years, where'd all that money go? Nobody had told me a thing about the savings, what it was spent for, where it went, what it was used for. I'm not saying it was misused, but there's, nobody seems to have a record of the savings. There has to be some kind of record about what it costs now and what it costs then a year. I'll tell you one thing. You drive from Johnson Tech to Market Street, it's so dark you have to use bright lights to avoid running into one of those 6,000 light poles. Maybe the mayor, since this falls under her office, maybe she has some kind of comment with solution or something about lighting because it's very poor. And I was hopeful maybe the new council might address the free parking for veterans and handicapped people from those parasites you gave $2 million to to save them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, council. Les Spiller, city resident homeowner. Well, the results of the election on Tuesday, I think the country sent Donald Trump a message that they're not satisfied with the direction the country's going. Two separate polls I saw that night, that's what they said. There were two separate polls that stated most, a good majority of the people polled were dissatisfied in the direction the country's going, contrary to what a couple people come here and talk about every week. Next thing, I want to congratulate all the winners in our city election and wish them good luck. Maybe if our council majority voted against that ridiculous streetscape plan, the election would have been different. But I think that election also showed the direction the city's going in, and they're not happy with what council did, passing that ridiculous program. It was a stupid idea. I wasn't against the whole thing, but again, you don't replace traffic lights with stop signs and think that's going to be safer. So I know, I think Mr. Smurl, that's why you didn't win. I think if Mr. King ran, he wouldn't have won either. And I think it doesn't sound good for Councilwoman Rothschild when she's up for election again because everybody I spoke to was against that. I said it two weeks ago, the poll, Channel 28, 22, had 85% of the people were against it. So all you, the majority, all you do is, when the mayor pulls your strings, you do what she wants you to do. And that's why we're having a different council in January. Hopefully, and not hopefully, I know that we're going to have a better council and they're going to stick up for the people, not stick up for what the mayor tells you to do. Lastly, finally, the subsidence on Dougherty Street was fixed by DPW. As I stated last week, it shouldn't have been their responsibility. That was the water company's responsibility to do it. It took from June to last week for that to get fixed, and it's unbelievable. There's no way it should have been that long and with the street, there were barriers around there from June to last week. Hopefully, what DPW did is going to hold up. We'll see, time will tell. But lastly, I also want to send my thoughts and prayers to David Wenzel's family. He was a great man and he'll be missed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is all for our sign and chief.
Good evening, council. Tom Coin Manuka. First, I wanted to refer the list of supporters for the walkability in the minutes. They now appear after the vote. It's always interesting when people who never show up appear on the last day because the people who appeared for the center city streetscapes had direct financial interest and a directly impact improved the property that they owned or had invested in. Council gave a lot of support to a single opinion and direction, once again ignoring the rules of council that the presidents were to uphold, when he apologized before and then broke them two more times. Moving on, tonight we have a bunch of grants. Parking garage vendor, another $246,000. Nonprofit roofs, nonprofit building renovations, $176,000 for an animal control vehicle. So the grants to support the for-profit parking and the nonprofits tonight are running $581,000. And for the poor and hungry, we have a resolution, a statement asking the mayor to make a statement that she cares and that at some point will maybe serve action on the issues of homelessness and hunger sometime, if she's still here. I'm sure the resolution will provide comfort when asking someone to confirm that they do care. Will it feed the poor and hungry? Will it house the homeless? We gave what, $10,000 to a nonprofit to hire a coordinator position for food and assistance because I guess they don't have any phone or email, but no funds the actual food and assistance. The Keystone Center was running a Code Blue at Weston Field, and they're gone. Back in the day, councilman Bill King asked if there was a potential site for a transformation center that's been identified. Barons from the Keystone Mission said no. Thank goodness, as they took the money from the same in Wilkes-Barre and ran. We have a night at Weston Field for Code Blue, but for the daytime when Weston Field is closed, since there's no longer a Keystone Day Center. Should the homeless now come and sit in City Hall as the daycare center? Can we line them up out in front, on both sides of the hall, out front of license and inspection, and give them shelter here?
CIC, Community Intervention Center, is open.
My time.
During the day.
Afterwards, my time. We don't have Norma pushing for food drives, and it seems that we put forth the concept of a citywide food drive. As a city could have drop-offs at DPW, City Hall, Weston Field, firehouses, but I guess without Norma, we don't have a clue on how to coordinate kindness. How about the unpaid allocated funds for the unfilled director positions? Why not take that unspent but unallocated money and provide it for hunger? Onward. Mr. King, we watched your face turn red. We're concerned that you're going to stroke out one of these days, you get so upset. You say, "I love how the people come and criticize." That's fine, I'm a big boy, it's water off a duck's back, I could take it. And then for the next five to seven minutes, show that you're not fine. You repeatedly regurgitate how the city is better than it is, and it is, but you can't claim the recovery act as you constantly try to claim the $67 million and try and give it to the administration credit. Do you take credit for COVID and the deaths? Because that came out of the same process. You want to own the credit for something that was not the action of the cities at all, as if it was something the city did miraculously that made the money appear, and it's not true. Things were getting neglected and did get fixed by the money from the plague and that the federal government shared with everyone. The claim to fame for the COVID money is, "We spent the money." Last, we have President Smurl, who invented a rule. Can you tell me where council rule says for public participation that Scranton tomorrow gets more than five minutes because they represent multiple groups? Wayne Evans appeared here and said, "I'm not here tonight as a former mayor, city councilman or city planner. I'm here tonight as a resident." But unlike everyone else who was limited to five minutes, you gave him 10 uninterrupted minutes. Can you point to me where these secret council special rules are for special people? There are rules, yes. The procedure... The procedure is, five minutes for everyone, and you can ask for a five-minute extension after you're stopped, and the president can do it. It's not supposed to be selectively given out. It's supposed to be open for everyone who needs extra time. And it seems that like everything else, the president does not know the rules of his own body. Good night.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Rick Little Scranton. My condolences to Mayor David Wenzel and his family. I'd like to talk about what everybody's discussing, democracy, the elections, and I'm the biggest loser in the mayoral election, but I was wondering, at the election, I went to the election board today, and during the debate, Mayor Cognetti said that somebody on this panel, which was me and Trish Bayon and Mr. Barrett, is going to be mayor if she becomes Congresswoman. But is that a law? It seems like too many people are, there's policy, procedure, and protocol mixed in with the law, and I don't, I don't understand how she could say that. I've been trying to, they told me at the election board to ask the attorney here what the basis for that is, but I'd like some sort of announcement on that, like, does she, is it picked by, I mean, we've seen it how it went in the county, you know, with the home rule charter, it's picked by, you know, it's replaced by a person of the same party, or is it the person with the most votes? And that's Trish Bayon, she should be the mayor if Page leaves, but who knows? It changes all the time. Like, I'd come here and I'd ask the attorney here, you know, who owns Scranton Housing Authority? Sean Gallagher says HUD. Turns out that wasn't right. Anyway, there is a problem with, in the whole, in my mind, in the whole governance, especially with the home rule charter, it's totally overweighted with party and the judiciary. And when I say the judiciary, I mean also the criminal judiciary, which is the district attorney. Now, there's an article in the paper about something that happened at the poll, somebody was writing her name in as a judge of elections. And I got the numbers for the, you know, the unofficial thing for who's judge of elections and who's inspector of elections, but that's not included in the thing, and they told me, well, it takes a week, week and a half for the overseas ballots to come in, or whatever like that. But this is all important, because all the major boards, and when I say board, I mean board, agency, there's all different words for them. And a lot of these boards, like the Scranton Housing Authority Board, is appointed by the mayor, which was one of my main things. She appoints the police chief, the fire chief, the code enforcement, and these people. And it turns out that they're all volunteers. They don't get paid. There's five of them. And they get there, and they have an election when they get there to elect the executive director of Scranton Housing Authority. And there's only one person running. And he won three to two, but this is just wrong. The amount of, you know, criminal prosecutors working in the housing thing and also being so connected with the election board and election inspectors. And like I've been saying, these public housing units are voting farms. They're Democrat voting farms. I've been to all of them. I've talked to the people, especially at Park Guardians, these are hardcore Democrat people. They're about to be evicted, and they will be evicted, and there's no due process with it, but people have to start, we have to, the judiciary is the main, biggest thing in the redistricting of this whole entire area, and I guess I'll wait till next week to really talk about this, because I'm out of time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Coyman for expressing concern about my health. I've had this nice red glow from all summer, from golfing and being out in the wind and raising three daughters, so, and from serving on council as well, I guess, partially. But I would like to congratulate all the winners of the election this past week, including Mr. Schuster here, and Mr. McAndrew sitting in the back there, and Patrick Flynn, who will be joining this council. I want to thank everyone who has served, including myself and Jerry. I give, I also want to give a lot of credit to anyone that put their name on the ballot, anybody that was willing to go out and do the work, get the, you know, collect those names, knocking on doors, walking through neighborhoods, raising funds, doing what it takes, because, you know, you put yourself out there, and it's not easy. And you do get criticized, and that's part of it. That's the nature of it. But democracy ruled. People won, and there were people who won, some people lost, and some people chose not to run, you know, and it is what it is. But I have faith in this city. I have faith in the new people that are going to be sitting up here, taking our places, and I have faith that, because I know the people that are going to be sitting up here in our spots, and I trust that they care about the city as much as I do. And a lot of people maybe in here don't think I made a lot of right decisions. I did make decisions what I felt was in the best interest of this city. Might not be the popular decision, but that's what I did, and I care about this city. Born and raised in this city, number seven of eight kids, four of which all still live here, taxpayers, homeowners. All my kids went to Scranton Public Schools. My wife teaches in Scranton Public Schools. I plan to live here long after I'm on city council, and I plan to be part of trying to continue to make the city better and do my part. It, you know, won't be as big a part as serving on council, but I'll continue to work and promote the Steam Town Marathon and do things to benefit our city when I have an opportunity. But I do sincerely want to wish the new incoming council the best of luck. I want to wish the mayor the best of luck moving forward. And once again, thank all those who chose to run for office, win, lose, or draw. I give you a lot of credit to go out and do that work and put your name out there. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I had a few questions from the October 28 meeting that I received answers for, and I'll report them out now. So, at, that night, 3C on the evening agenda was budget transfer. And the transfer, it was within the Department of Public Works, the transfer is going to cover the cost of the remainder of the year for the radio community system provided by Industrial Electronics with the Department of Public Works. So, they transferred money just to make sure that we had that covered for the year. I had asked about our update on our MS4 permitting for Scranton and where the city is in terms of communication with their surrounding municipalities in regard to stormwater, and the answer that I got back was that the city completed the annual MS4 report and submits it to DEP. The city and its advisors, HRG, are continuing to compile data and will schedule a meeting with the surrounding municipalities in coordination with DEP in the near future to discuss stormwater. I had a question about 3103 McCarthy Street in Manuka. It was a house that had, there was issues with the home, but it had also caught on fire at one point in time. So, I wanted the city administration to assist in following up with code enforcement regarding the long-term issues that were going on at that house. Some of the neighbors had made complaints regarding rodents, a dangerous structure, alleged drug activities, and the answer that I got back was that code enforcement, the code enforcement department has confirmed that permits for the property located at 3103 McCarthy Street are open and active. So, those construction permits are open and active. Code enforcement continues to monitor the situation in accordance with all applicable procedures. Can we just, Mr. Voldenberg asked that, we just check the permits, check the contractor's license, make sure this is being done properly at that address, 3103 McCarthy?
I'll verify it in the morning.
Thank you. I had, I got some positive feedback about the Weston Field Skate Park, and the neighbors were very happy about the investments made to Weston Park. However, at the skate park, there were individuals there until 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., reported after dark. So, we asked about, I asked about the hours of operation for a skate park, and does the park close at dusk? And the city responded back that all city parks close at dusk. The Parks Department can request extra patrols based on police need and availability. Residents may contact the Scranton Police if they have any concern about people in the park after dusk. So, the suggestion there is just that the residents in the area contact the police if there's anyone in there after dusk. There was an address at 2501 Boulevard Avenue. They've complained about flooding in the area for years, and I put them in contact with the city engineers and the city coordinator. I had asked if the city had contacted the residents there at that address, and what I got back is that city engineers have evaluated the situation, and they have determined that the issue involves a 36-inch PA Water infrastructure pipe at that property, and PA Water has been notified, and the city engineer is in the process of scoping the potential solution so that PA Water can implement using their existing infrastructure. I also, a couple weeks back, and also in the summer, I asked about the Gateway Project for West Scranton and signage, because there was funding for that signage. So, I asked in regard to item 4A on October 27th, what the funding source was for the Gateway signage, and they stated that the funding for the signage is an LSA grant. When we received a draft copy of the budget, and one thing that I noticed right off the bat was that the third-party pave cut company was down from $500,000 to $300,000 in the budget. So, that was a surprise to me. But we started a new pave cut process this year, and Mr. Voldenberg, I'm going to make a request for some information. Since the project has started, or since this new, this new protocol, if you will, has started, can we just get the number of permits that were requested, and then the amount of revenue since the start of the year with the new pave cut process?
I will, sir.
And in the past, I got information, I believe from 2021 to 2024, but if we could, can we request information from 2016 to 2020 regarding revenue when it comes to the pave cut inspector?
I'll get that also.
Thank you very much. And then the last thing is, can we also inquire about where we're at with the DPW CBA?
I will.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First off, I do have a list of food pantries. It's a pretty comprehensive list of food pantries throughout Lackawanna County. It's divvied up into daily, weekly, and monthly pantries, and it's been locally updated as well. And it's through a website, I think CEOPeopleHelpingPeople.org, and so I will provide the rest of council and the administration, if they'd like, the list that they have posted there, because that should be easy enough then for us to use and also post, so people have the resources that they need. And I do want to thank all of the people who have been so generous in this time where SNAP benefits are at risk, and people may not have enough money for their basic needs or their children's basic needs. And so, I appreciate how much we've come together as a community, and how many people are stepping up and offering food and other items to people who need it. I had, well, an update about the Code Blue shelter. There has been significant progress. I think we're just waiting on finalizing an MOU with the people who will be able to take over the Code Blue or help the city out with it this winter, and an announcement will be coming very soon, I'm assured. So, I can't say much more now, but that will be coming out shortly, and I'm happy that we've worked together to get the Code Blue shelter up and running for the winter, as I'm hopeful for that. I also did want to provide Mr. Coyman with an answer. He did ask a question regarding what shelters there are during the day for people who are homeless, who might need it, especially when it is cold out. And so, Community Intervention Center, CIC, that is open to unhoused people who can go there for a number of services, and much of the same services that Keystone Mission had offered previously, and they had actually found at one point that a lot of those services were duplicated. So, it's good that they are, they're still in operation and a good resource for people during the day. And I wanted to thank the administration for working on getting two streets paved down in the lower Hill section, Pine Street and East Gibson Street. These were, for the past few months, a lot of the blacktop had been washed up, and were blocking drains, and were in the roadway, and now they've both been paved. And so, I'm sure the residents and the people who are going to the hospitals there in the Hill section are very happy that that has been repaired. And I know we had contracted that out, so I appreciate it. And then I also wanted to bring up an intersection in the Hill at East Gibson and North Webster Avenue, which I believe Councilman McAndrew had brought up previously, because we had a resident bring it to our attention, that I believe it was American Water, but I could be incorrect on that, that had been doing work on North Webster Avenue and had to go back into the pavement at that intersection where there are freshly painted crosswalks. And so, not only do we need the painted crosswalks to be repaired, but also that pavement is now sinking in, so I don't know if it was compacted correctly or what, but I would like to get our inspectors out there and get them back as soon as possible to make those repairs, which I've already asked Mr. Voldenberg to do, so thank you. And I was also, last week, I had attended the Hill Neighborhood Association meeting. They're getting back up and going, and I know a lot of neighborhood groups around the city are, which is, which I think is a really great thing, and so I was happy to go there and to speak. And what I had suggested, and which I think could be a good suggestion for other neighborhood groups, is that they have maybe a liaison that can come to council when there are concerns regarding their neighborhood or things that we can address, and that may make it easier when there's that point person who could, who could bring that to us, and it's coming from the neighborhood group. So, that was one of the things that we had discussed. They had also brought to my attention over on Poplar Street, which I was aware that Poplar Street, a section of it has been closed for quite some time. It's where there's the old stone road, and it's, I believe, quite treacherous and disrepair, and a lot of overgrowth there, and they were wondering if there were any updates on Poplar Street, if there's any potential for that to be repaired or paved over, or what plans there may be. I think they were interested at some point in putting a "Welcome to the Hill" section sign in that area, but right now it wouldn't, might not be the best place with the appearance. Lastly, I just wanted to make a few comments on the election. I wanted to first congratulate Mayor Cognetti on her reelection. I also wanted to thank Councilman Bill King for the time that he's served on council, and I know he has until December still. And I know he has until, until December still, but I appreciate all the work that he's done for council. And I'm sorry that he didn't seek reelection, but I do also want to congratulate the winners for council. And I'm looking forward to working with the new council in January. I do ask for open communication and honesty. I think that council can be most effective in that way. And also whoever is president will need to, will need to collaborate with all of council and with the mayor and her administration, even if they don't always agree. The, this communicate, the communication still needs to be there in order for us to, like I said, be effective and make meaningful change for the city. And I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Smurl for his work on council. And as president of council, I've been on here for six years, so I've seen a number of our, of people in that position, including Bill Gahan, Kyle Donahue, Jerry, and Bill King, of course. And I know that it's not an easy position to be in. And he has certainly been very hardworking in that time. The amount of, I've seen the amount of time and commitment that he has poured into this council. And I'm sorry that he won't be continuing to serve come January, but I just want him to know that I appreciate all of his work here, as should you all, because I think he's done a lot for the community. And I know that he will continue to do a lot for the community too, and his volunteer work that he does for NAOG and a lot of other things that he does. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple inquiries from residents. The first being from a young lady who lives on Factory Place. She says she's been calling DPW to come and fill some holes in the alley, which is her only way in and out, but they haven't gotten there yet. So, and it really needs to be paved. So could you please put that on DPW's radar and get some type of answer from them?
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
If it's going to be done. Also, I received another note from, from a gentleman. And he says, and like I said, sometimes the best ideas come from our residents, right? So, and he said I could use his note. Feel free to use this letter, so I'm going to. "I'm writing to you in hope that you will revisit the existing problem in the city involving the homeless camps. I recently visited the Community Intervention Center to make a donation, which I will continue to do." So he's, he supports the, you know, and is the best he can in the homeless. "They are in need of so many different items to help those who are in need. Today, he stopped along the road behind the Sheets on Linden Street so he can get a better view of the encampment." He states that the entire surrounding, this camp is a mess filled with litter. "I know that not all people living in this area, it's by their choice, but if they are living there, they should keep the area free from debris, not only for the aesthetics, but for their own safety to be free of animals attracted to trash." And he states, "What are your thoughts on this?" And he goes, "Maybe trash receptacles could be placed in these areas with the mandate that the police, that they police the area for, or so it's, you know, this trash is removed." He says, "I feel sure, I feel sure you know who to contact regarding this." So I'm doing it now on his behalf. And like I get, again, he said, "Feel free to use your letter." So I am. Like I said, this is a good idea. So let's see if this is possible to help with, you know, his concern. So last week, and this is an ongoing problem with the railroad bridges. It's, it's been going since I'm here. And I brought it up a couple of times. So last week, I asked if the city may revisit and provide update on prior plans between the city and PENDOT for additional signage on Lackawanna Avenue, North Main Avenue, and the expressway to alert tractor-trailer drivers of the railroad bridge, you know, that has the height restrictions. He noted that recent increase in bridge accidents and tractor-trailers being rerouted into the narrow streets in Trips Park neighborhood because the GPS is sending them to Kaiser that way. And like I stated last week, I think the biggest problem, and I know there's signage, and, you know, and I know if, if the drivers miss the signage, they're being cited. And that's great. But, but I think, and I think there's repeat offenders or companies that are repeating this because they're the same deliveries that are going to these different places. So that's an issue that I think should be addressed, seeing, you know, how many of these companies are repeat offenders with this and how come they're not helping us out. But I also believe when you approach out of town, go up to Lackawanna Avenue, that, like I said last week, the signage is, it's almost too late when you see the signage. I believe it should be, it should be positioned sooner because once they get to the top of Lackawanna and they're in the right lane, they have to go right. And, and then they go, "Oh, my God," or they're alerted somehow. They try to go up through the, through the sides or through the streets and try to find Kaiser because that's where there's GPS, but you can't get the Kaiser from there. You know, or maybe the sign should alert them somehow. "Okay, you want to get the Kaiser, you got to turn left at the top of Lackawanna." These drivers can be all over the country. They don't know, you know, their way around like we do. So I think that that still needs to be looked at. And I know, you know, we'd involve PENDOT, but obviously what's been done already isn't working. So if it's not working, we have to fix it. So the response I got was the city engineer will review. So let's see what happens with it.
Mr. McAndrew, maybe, you know how some of these newer stop signs have those flashing lights? Maybe we could get some kind of a truck warning signs that have those flashing lights around?
Something, yeah.
To just tell them ahead, like you're right, once they get up to the top of West Lackawanna, take a right. There's no, if they're on the Kaiser, if they didn't go left, there's no way to get there.
No. GPS will send them, that's, that's what I'm hearing. So, like I said, you know, obviously what's working, what's, what's in place isn't working, so we need to fix it.
But I'm even thinking on the bridge, for even ones that are maybe coming up Main Avenue, like just above the bridge for at least the ones that are coming in that direction.
There is signage, but obviously it's not working. So I don't know what the answer is, but we need to find one.
We don't have an overhead bar, so if they hit the bar, then they know they're going to hit the bridge.
Yeah, I, you know what? Like I said, whatever we're doing isn't working, so let's, let's own up to it and fix it. All right. So then last week, I'm trying to refine my inquiry or my, my request. And I'm thrilled that Mr. King reported out that the mayor is in a collaborative effort with some organizations to raise money for food insecurity. That's great. But my request was to please list local food pantries, organizations that can help the people that can't donate. All right? They're the ones in, in the most need. So, and that was my question last week. So let's refine it again because, like I said, what I got was just a www.pato11.org and it's, it's, it's just a link that's pretty vague. It's not a great resource because it lists organizations that are in Bethlehem, Allentown, Lancaster. So what I want is just a simple list, maybe like the list Dr. Rothschild mentioned. I know there's one out there. I saw it on Facebook a week ago, but I can't remember where I saw it and I tried to look for it. But the list needs to be local specific. So the residents that can't donate, obviously, and I'm thrilled that, you know, our, our community will step up and donate. I know that's going to happen. But the people that can't donate are the most affected, need a resource. I just think a simple list, were they able to view it and get to these places that are working diligently and collecting food and donations that can assist them? All right? And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Voldenberg, the floor.
5B for introduction and ordinance, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2026 to and including December 31st, 2026 by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2026.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, establishing a no parking zone along the southeasterly side of the 500 block of South Washington Avenue.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Rutledge Excavating to perform services for the Stormwater Fast Track project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Ark of Northeastern Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $76,500 to be used towards major renovations to their headquarters project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Community Development Properties Scranton, Inc., CDPS, to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $246,391 to be used towards the structural and maintenance improvements to the Linden Street parking garage and the Medallion Parking Garage project.
At this time, entertain a motion that 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Providence Pregnancy Center to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $82,413 to be used towards the roofing project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to amend the contract with Social Contract LLC for the Scranton Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Could we get an update on just where we're at with this, with the Community Violence Intervention Project? Just get an update.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving execution and submission of a contract with Ecore World LLC to perform municipal electronics recycling.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? And so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Leeward Construction, Inc., to perform the Manuka Stormwater Improvements Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? And so moved.
5K for introduction, a resolution, resolution expressing the city of Scranton's commitment to ending hunger and malnutrition and establishing policy to promote food access and food security for all.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Eyes have it? And so moved.
5L for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the city of Scranton through the Department of Economic and Community Development to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $176,000 to be used towards the purchase of a new animal control vehicle.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5L be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? So moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 100, 2025, an ordinance, amending filed to council number 31, 2024, an ordinance as amended and titled, approving and accepting the city of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the year 2025 pursuant to section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter, and filed to council number 11 of 2024 by amending certain line items in the 2025 capital budget and the 2025 capital reserve fund spending plan, and to add new line items to the 2025 capital budget and the 2025 capital reserve fund spending plan.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Eyes have it? So moved.
6B, reading by title, filed to council number 101, 2025, an ordinance, amending abandoned property code to expand registration requirements for vacant properties, strengthen enforcement, place additional requirements on vacant properties, and enact related provisions.
You have heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? And so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 278, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute, engage in, and record any and all documents necessary to grant the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a right-of-way and temporary construction agreement related to replacing the culvert on the corner of Yard Avenue and West Market Street, and accept payment from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the right-of-way and temporary construction easement.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. It's great to see that this project is beginning and we're going to replace that culvert on Yard Ave.
Agreed. On the question.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, everybody clear? Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there is no further business, entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
I have something quick. As, as we speak, a resident sent me an extensive list of daily pantries, monthly pantries, that is exactly what we're looking for with the times, the phone numbers. So I will forward that to you and other council members and see that administration gets it, if they kindly put it on the website.
I'll pass it along, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no further business. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.